Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Corrine Township. Work session on July 27, 6:00 P.M. Let's raise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh-oh, Mr. Baker, please.
Mr. Unger?
Here.
Mr. Rajagopal?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please sit up, please. Next on the agenda is the presentations.
Good evening, Mr. Rajagopal, Board of Trustees. This is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees to hold a work session, and the only topic on the agenda this evening is a discussion of your priorities for the 2022 strategic plan and budget. I understand that it is only July 27, but starting next week, we will begin in earnest our planning for 2022. And before we do that, we wanted to make sure that we have a very clear understanding of the direction that you all want to go in next year. If I could just take a minute or two to share with you the budget process, share with our audience the budget process and where we are in it. It has been and continues to be the goal of our administration and at your direction that we should be aligning our financial resources with the work that we want to accomplish. That's why we put together a strategic plan and a budget in the same book. What do we want to do and what resources do we have to do it with? For the last, since 2018, each strategic plan and budget has had a big theme. You'll recall transparency, beautification, creating connections, and clean, green, and prosperous have been the big themes of our strategic plans. This year, as I've just mentioned, clean, green, and prosperous has guided us in the creation of six goals. The first three goals relate to clean, green, and prosperous. The second three goals relate to sort of operational improvements that we look to make. Underneath each of those goals are initiatives. These are things that our departments are going to do outside of sort of the daily grind in order to achieve those goals. And we know whether or not we're making progress towards those goals because we have key performance indicators that we monitor for each goal. So the budget process has already begun with the tax budget that has been adopted by the Board. The next step is temporary appropriations. This is the heaviest lift of the entire budgetary process. It will culminate, this step will culminate in our December, I believe, 14th Board of Trustee meeting when you'll be presented with a temporary appropriations resolution that will set the budget for next year. From now until December, we have lots to do. First, here tonight, our hope is to better understand what you would like for us to accomplish. Next week, our leadership team is going to hold a leadership retreat where we are going to problem solve, troubleshoot operational issues that have risen, take stock of where we've come so far this year, what we need to wrap up for the rest of the year, and then spend a significant amount of time talking about our initiatives for next year. We will then be reaching out to residents with town hall meetings as we have done pre-COVID to get input on their priorities for strategic planning goals and initiatives, and then budget. Our hope is to have two town hall meetings on those two topics. Once we have received your input, of course, tonight, residents' input, we will begin synthesizing all of that together into a 2022 strategic plan and budget, and we will hope to have legislative action taken by the Board to formalize your priorities as we did last year in a resolution form. So that is where we are and where we're headed. There's a lot of work ahead. This is a really exciting time. This is the time when we just get to listen and then develop ways to execute your vision. So our ears are open and looking forward to the direction.
You want to go first? Jeff, this is, you know, I'm a big supporter of the strategic planning and the goals. Any organization has to be oriented towards strategic goals. In other words, I always say in the previous meetings said, otherwise you'd be like a runaway twin, no plan, no goals, no end result. All the goals we developed, we can measure, we can quantify how far we are going, where we're going to go, and how are you going to spend the money? That's the important thing that you discussed. One thing I really liked about your rationale, one goal of the administration is to align our financial resource with the work we want to accomplish. This means that we must understand the priorities of our trustees, that what we plan to do, what the people elected us for to do our job, and residents, that's where we all work for the residents, the needs, and articulate those priorities clearly in the form of strategic plan. And then, like you mentioned earlier, align financial resource of the township to accomplish those priorities. I think you said it, you guys set it up nicely, you know. I love the way I bent the, to the leadership retreat thing you guys had a couple of years ago, and it's good to have this, get away from this, in this situation, place, go somewhere, you can brainstorm and talk each other, be comfortable to each other, give some ideas and come up with a great plan. And you are right along the targets. Step one, tax budget, you know, it should be July, then temporary appropriations, all the things you mentioned, you know, presidency earlier. I think this is the way we are taking, move forward of Corrine Township to a better place to live. I really appreciate doing this.
Absolutely.
Dan or?
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
All right, I have a laundry list that's in no particular order. Some of them are kind of like process and some of them are kind of product. I will point out for those viewing, you know, the motivation behind this, I've seen a number of figures, but the most recent one, if you write down your goals and set them, you're 275% more likely to achieve significant results. I mean, it's really as simple as that, and that's one reason that I think this is an important process, too. And when I look at kind of these goals, you know, I mentioned I alluded to performance and process goals, I think that you have kind of long-term and short-term goals. Usually, government doesn't do well with long-term goals because by 2024, there could be three new of us, three different ones of us here, for whatever reason. And that makes it difficult for the long-term goal, but there's some elements that I want to concentrate on. You mentioned key performance indicators, and I know that we had a discussion a couple of months ago about this. In the teaching field, we do what are called formative and summative kind of analysis. Summitive is at the end of the year, it gives you a grade, hey, you got a C in the class. But formative is through the process. And I'd like to be able to do more, I know our meetings tend to be lengthy anyway, but I'd like to have some more formative goals so that we have kind of ongoing feedback linked to what our goals are. So maybe, you know, maybe we look at strategic goal three at the, I don't know, the March 1st meeting or something like that, so that we, I think it's important to stay focused on that. And one thing I've noticed this year more than really any year in the past is that it's, the departments are focused in the same direction, too, and they're channeling the same energy, and I think that's important. But to get to some specific things, we talked about clean, green, and prosperous. If I were to add a corollary for this coming up year, it would be safety in all its forms, meaning, you know, people not driving around buses on the side of the road and people not flying. We saw the unfortunate tragic thing that happened in Springfield Township at the beginning of the week with the individual that was driving, I don't know how they did this, speeds up to 100 miles an hour on Galbraith, you know, and a lady lost her life. I mean, you know, I don't know that you can ever fix that, but I think that safety in continuing sidewalk plans and safety, you know, with crosswalks where needed and safety and that we find out, you know, and I know the police are going to a different kind of scheduling model so that they could be more reactive to the peak times, that's part of safety, too. I want to continue with the beautification program because I think that we have, if, on a scale of one to 100, what, you know, I think we're like at like a 10. We're getting there, we see it as a, but there's just so much that I want to do with that because, you know, if I use one kind of motto, I want this to be kind of hometown again, where people don't want to dump their trash. And, you know, I'm under no illusions, the people that are dumping their trash, 90% of them are the people running the stop signs probably, I mean, these are probably offenders that just do it because they don't care, but we want to make them to care. We talked about this last year, and I know that we're kind of, I like to kind of work on rebranding, and I think that that's linked with kind of beautification. And the one term that I see in like the last three or four strategic plans is identity. You know, identity, what is Corrine? What is, where is Corrine? I mean, what's the center of Corrine? If I ask four people, I could get like four different answers. I think that's important in the beautification, you know, it's kind of that broken windows theory as you begin to, as you begin to address those issues. Sustainability, and I know, again, I've talked to you a little bit about it just last week, I think, you know, I don't know if it works or not, but do you work to put geothermal in our buildings? Because, you know, part of what I want to do is plan for the long-time horizon. Now that we have a new team in place with, or will, depending upon a vote tonight, I guess, with economic development and zoning, I want to get to the nitty-gritty of defining what economic development is. Everybody says economic development, what does it mean to me? What does it mean to Mr. Wettback? What does it mean to, it's going to mean something different, but I think we need a functional definition to move us forward with that. And this is a great time for that because we have a blank slate. And that's, you know, that's, we talked about quantifying it, and I think that's important, but I also want to also, you know, I'm a qualitative guy, I think we can, you know, qualify it, too. I mean, to the, you know, if we say that, I don't know, crime has dropped 30%, that doesn't mean anything to the guy that lives at the corner that, you know, gets a car to crash in his side of his house or something. So, you know, there's a qualitative kind of way to that, too, and I think that's part of kind of the summative and formative discussion that we have. And I think our biggest economic issue is still the mall going forward, and, you know, I said this a number of times, it's a race to see who can develop the mall first, which mall first, because there's, we've got a whole area of, a whole tri-state area of malls that are hanging, you know, by a thread, and we need to kind of address that. More work, I love the work sessions, I, you know, more than any kind of government area that I've known, it's the people of Corrine want to see how the sausage made, is made, so to speak. Use that definition all the time with my AP kids, I'm like, you know, it's like, government's like making a hot dog, you don't want to know what's in there, but it tastes good. And Corrine, they really want to see what we're doing right now so that they know that it's an open and frank discussion in the light of day. So I think I've, I think I've hit my major points, but I think this is an evolutionary thing, and I'm so happy to be starting it now so that we can address these issues.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Go ahead, Dan.
You know, one of my, one of my goals in life, and it's the way I've always lived, is to be out of debt. And this township can't really do anything unless we're in control of our finances. And in the three years, three and a half years that I've been here, and Raj has been here that time, and, you know, Matt's coming up on two, you know, and after November 3rd, Matt, you're next. So, but, but, you know, I bought a house when I was 24, and I just had this headstrong goal of, we're just going to stay here until it gets paid off. And the way I've lived my life, I actually paid it off on my 39th birthday, and we went a couple of years without, we stayed in that little house, it was very affordable, and my wife was always, when are we getting a bigger house? And I said, when the first one's paid off. So we had this little two-year window where we lived in that little tiny two-bedroom house without any debt. And they came and she went out and we bought a bigger house. And once again, I was hell-bent on getting that one paid off, and I just never could stand being in debt. And, you know, one of the things we've done in the three years here, and one of my goals was to always finish in the green or in the black, and in the first three years, we've had budget surpluses. And, you know, we're not a bank, and we're not here to bank the taxpayers' money, but we're sure not here to run things backwards and be like so many other municipalities, especially that very large one just south of here, that is so upside down in debt, it's the place where you live, it's the city of Cincinnati. And the folks that run that, four of the nine, which are probably on their way to jail, they just have their finances so upside down. So one of my goals here has always been, and I think one of the Jeffs, I think there's several Jeffs back there that know how upside down Cincinnati has gotten itself, and they just continue to dig the hole deeper. And, you know, my main goal here has always been to run a fiscally upright ship, and congratulations to the folks in our administration who have heard that message from all three of us and continue to do that. So that's the most important thing because if we're not financially stable, then we have nothing, and we have nothing to work with. The primary function of a trustee, going back to the Ohio Constitution, is just to maintain a system of roads, and I think that was one of my original goals when I ran for this seat, and I think we've done a great job, and there's a long list of streets that have either been completely rehabilitated or had another layer of asphalt put on them along with a lot of other infrastructure projects and drainage and all those things that are very core to operating a township. And so one of my goals is to continue to update and upgrade our streets and, you know, the places where people live, the neighborhoods, and some of that goes into one of my other original goals, which was ramp up the code enforcement through the, over the last 10 years, there was a point where I, before we were here, and for various budgetary reasons, there really was no code enforcement, and boy, when you let, when you let your guard down on that for even a short period of time, things can really start to go south. And the code enforcement is critical, and it's been sort of evolutionary here, and, you know, we've recreated the zoning department, and some things changed, and we're, dependent upon a majority vote, we're about to make a little bit more fine tuning of it, and so that's a critical thing, so that the neighbors, I was talking to chief just before this meeting about a couple trouble spots, and there's always going to be those. And there's always going to be the guy who's moving stuff around or has stuff sitting on his property too long, and we're not the government that comes rolling onto your property to take your stuff. But at the same time, you do have neighbors, and the neighbors deserve to have a clean, tidied-up neighborhood, and as I've said so many times, I don't care if you're rich or poor, that there's no reason to have a bunch of junk or cars up on blocks in your driveway. And I think we've made tremendous progress on cleaning that up. Yes, there is plenty more to do. I spent this afternoon riding around preparing for this meeting, and I can still see some of the places, and the fact is, is we do have a system of courts, and there are people who will fight us to the end to keep that van parked in their yard on the corner. And, you know, like I said, we're not the government that's going to come rolling onto your property, but I'm willing to use every tool in the toolbox to, and I'm not going to tell you the address, but that van is still there, and it's been driving me crazy, but, you know, we just can't go in their yard and take it, but some of these guys got to get, got to get on the ball and get that out of there. It just brings down the whole neighborhood. So the code enforcement is very important to me. And one of the things that, one of the other things that goes hand in hand with that is we started a, and this would be one of my goals, is last October, after some discussion with the Board, we started a litter program where we were going to have two employees that just, you know, little hotspot, hey, today, go over and clean up on Hanley Road, there's a bunch of stuff down there, hey, tomorrow it's raining, take the day off, just two 20-hour positions. I, we really need to figure out a way for the Board to get that filled, and way back at the beginning of it, we talked about getting a new truck, and I said, no, let's get a donated truck and make sure this is going to work. So to me, it's very important, and I was hoping that it would work, and it still will, but at that point, after it's working for six or eight months, then we talk about getting some new equipment, but we have the equipment, the positions are available, it'd be a great job for a college student or a part-time person that's, you know, has a passion for cleaning up the community, and that's one of my other goals also is that. And as far as taxes and stuff, we went with the absolute minimum, that the fire department, they had asked for a range from six to three mils, and the Board went with three because we have to be able to balance the needs of our departments with the ability of people to pay for those services. And besides the being out of debt thing, which I just love that, I think by '22, we have completely paid off all of our general obligation bonds, and to those of you watching at home, we will be one of the very, very few municipalities to be out of debt and to have a budget surplus every year, and you can just look anywhere and you're not going to see that. And that's, I don't know if you hear any passion in my voice or not, to me, that is critical to the long-term future of this township, and I think if there is a need for increased revenues, it's going to come through economic development. And, you know, we talked about the mall, well, there's that industrial park up there at Struble Road, you know, where the new Rumpke building is, well, this Board, the previous Board built Generation 5, there's a bunch of vacant business spots up there, and I know some things have heated up and cooled back down as far as getting something in there, but we need to focus on that and focus, you know, the mall, the mall, the mall, what's in a very highly visible location. We have a lot of available, you know, lost opportunities, you know, business properties that are vacant, where if we could find the right person to match in there. Everything from the Kroger store, which is in Corrine, the former Kroger store, and maybe we've got something going there and maybe we don't, but we just need to keep rolling on those and get those together. And my other priority goes back to the, sort of the infrastructure part, you know, we've had a long discussion about updating our buildings, and we've got the process rolling of the facility.
Master plan.
And the master plan, I don't know how that's coming along, maybe you can comment on that, but I do believe in keeping up our buildings, and, you know, we're a little different on which of those two firehouses would be built first, the one up at Dunlap is old, 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 and the fire truck, there's six inches of clearance when you pull the door down, and it seems that the majority of the Board is interested in the one on Galbraith, but, you know, I'm fine with that, too, but we need to find a way to at least get one of those replaced, and that could go back to the three-plus years of $3 million-plus budget surpluses. I just hate to take out debt for that. I realize that sometimes the argument is, is, well, the people that are going to get the use out of it is the people of the future. Well, the people of the future are already so saddled with taxes, maybe there's a way to combine a couple grants in some other way and ultimately get one of those two replaced in the next couple of years, just to keep it going, because if you don't occasionally replace stuff, you get so far behind, and that's what happened in this township over the last 10 to 15 years, is we just have to figure that out. So to sum it up, you know, keeping our street paving program going, ramping up the code enforcement, I think the partnership with the police department has been a quantum leap forward, to keep the code enforcement going, as I said, get something going with the litter pickup, and mainly stay out of debt, because it's just something personal about, something that's messed up with my personality. I just can't stand owing people money, and I don't want to saddle my fellow citizens with that. So that's a very long answer to a short question, so.
I got comments, listening to our fellow trustees. We are agreed, you know, we all in the same path to develop Corrine Township, same path. So we want to achieve the goal. So what, we had a progressive strategic goal, we started the '19 with the 20 sidewalks and 2020 clean beautification, and '19, we got more emphasis on safety, number one, serenity. We continue this pattern, continue this gradual thing, achieve what we want to climb to. They're all, we all, Matt, Dan, we are talking about the economic development's a vital part, branding, what is Corrine? Where is, what is Corrine? Where, you know, what people ask, what kind of things we're going to accomplish? So there's a lot of things from the previous meetings and the emails we get, Corrine Township, Corrine Corridor Plan we developed in '18, we spent about, what, $98,000. That is one to become a reality, and also Jeff Mills is applying for the grant with the federal money, which the transportation bill, they're going to pass, hopefully very pass soon, which we will benefit out of that. Congressman Steve Habits also help, his staff helping us. Now, would we hear in the Corrine, that's gateway to our township, we need to make it economically sound, attract the business. People talk about the bridge, 275 Bridge, it's been a dialogue since I got elected. You know, they were really, they're looking at the other township bridges, Green Township, even if you go I-71, Woodlawn, there was a, Corrine becoming like a sword thumb on this, because when are you going to do this? How are you going to attract the people with 275, make them look like, oh, man, this is, this is, this is very important? I think we start from there, down along, all the way to the grove, and Matt talked about Tiff Districts, you know, great idea in the southern part of Corrine Avenue, where the old Kroger is, and you are working diligently to bring in the business there in all Kroger buildings. So when we see, put together, all the trustees together, what's 2022, the project, we, let's pound on the continuation of the safety planning, which we've done, continuation of the plan we have for 21 budget. Now, let's pound on that economic developments. That's completely needed. How are we going to achieve? We'll get rid of all the vacant buildings there, so many, make an inventory of all the vacant buildings that either run out of the business along the corridor plan, along the Corrine Avenue. I get a lot of people ask me everywhere I go, what are you going to do with the vacant buildings, the business vacant buildings? And again, those stand up like a sword thumb on the people walking down the Corrine. What is Corrine? You know, when I, when I go on the Federal Hurdle Road, Mason Montgomery Road, what do you, Beauchamp Avenue, like that, they're completely, they're changing. You know, Westchester, we go the Dayton, Cincinnati Dayton Road, other day I was going, and these are the gateway to the township, the place we live. And that, if that looks good, it attracts the business, they'll come, I mean, we already know Corrine Township right in the spot, Corrine Township right in the spot in the state and the nation, because it's a growing city and people interested in it. That's what we get all the grants, federal grants, state grants, they're looking at the Corrine, but we have to make it happen. I think that's a priority we should give. And also, Dan talked about the budget, Mike, I mean, Jeff is going to give the presentation. We are, you know, sound in budget compared with any other cities, the way we hit up the game, and we got a solid, solid budget plan and a resource, the capital, the cash flow, I think Jeff is going to explain all this cash balance, the fund balance, everything. So we are solid. Now, how are we going to implement those budget to take Corrine Township one step higher and attract the business? That's, that's what Matt pounded on this, and Dan's, everything, I think all trustees pretty much going to the direction for 2022.
You know, Raj, I kind of chuckled when you named Beauchamp Avenue and Westchester, I could have asked you the question, name places that have a lot worse traffic headaches than we do, and that was the question you were answering, and I'm thinking about Beauchamp Avenue, since they've done some of the modifications out there, and they cut out a lot of the driveway aprons, so there's limited access to get to some of the businesses, and hopefully the traffic will move a little faster up and down Beauchamp Avenue, and I've been out there at rush hour, and it's a mess.
Yeah. You know, You know, um, Colrain Avenue, you talk about, I, I, I happened to be last week in the sort of Board of Metro, uh, the board meeting. Um, and we talked about this Colrain Township. I think we are very close, get the grants that the pullout, they're going to fund it. They'll reduce temporarily the, the traffic jam during the peak hours. When they, when, when, when we build that, uh, the pullout, the bus for the bus stop, that the evening time, that bus stop takes a toll on our township, uh, Colrain Avenue. So, um, you know, but you're right, Dan, if you look at the Mason Montgomery Road, Federal Hill Road, the amount of business, the building coming up, it's really, it's, it's beyond, uh, you know, to explain. So how the new buildings, uh, new business coming, it really attracts the whole, that neighborhood, the area. So, so we definitely focus on this, uh, the next year, how work with the ODOT, how are we going to, to the, the, the bridge, painting, the Colrain logo, we can put it on, on the bridge. And, and also, you know, like I said, when I say the gateway to the Colrain, when you take the ramp, uh, people take the exit ramp, 275, we still have, uh, the, the, the lot of tall bushes and everything there. I think, uh, I called ODOT, um, last week when, when, um, Matt mentioned about the tall bushes along the 275, they, they, they cut it pretty good. They, they, they did it last week, really cleaned up pretty well. Uh, again, um, more cooperative cooperation with the ODOT, uh, county engineers and our department, that'll also the major thing that we'll focus on, uh, 22, uh, strategic goals.
Yeah, I wanted, I had one other thought that goes along with, with my comments. Um, and this would be to our employees, Colrain Township is a good place to work. You might be able to go somewhere else and, and make a few thousand dollars more any given year, but I'd like to look back at the last, you know, 12 to 18 months and what went on with, um, with the state mandated COVID shutdowns and that type of thing. I don't believe we cut a single employee's hours and I don't, I think we had two employees up at the mall that you mentioned that, that because the mall was closed, that that was their, their position. But everybody else, we were able to keep them employed. And it's important when you work here and you have a family and you have, you know, payments and tuition and the other things that, that go, go along with, with having your family, is, is that you know, there's very little chance of getting laid off. And one of the things about the township, I can look at any particular employee and I know what it is that they do. The other place where I used to be years ago, sometimes I would look at folks and I'd go, what do you do here? You know, not that they weren't doing something, but I just didn't know what it was. And this is a good place to work and, and I don't want you to think that because we're trying to run a little surplus every year so we can get some major projects done, that, that anything's gonna, gonna change that. And, and I really appreciate your efforts here. And every one of you that I have met in the last three and a half years has, has been super kind to me and I, I don't think you walk down the street and say, no more Unger or anything like that one sign that's out there. But, um, the, uh, we value your, your work that you do for us and, and public works and police and fire and the folks that are here in the office and the, and the front desk and the, and the people that you never see. And, and that's an important, that's the most important part of keeping the organization going strong is to have employees that are satisfied with their work, that, that feel like their contribution matters and, and that they're helping us, helping the trustees, whoever's sitting up here, get our, get our goals realized. And that would be just another thing to think about as we fine tune our, what we're going to do in the coming years, is to, to keep in mind that the, the people we have working here are a, a very important part of it. And, and I don't know how our turnover compares to other municipal organizations. But, but I think it's critical that in, you know, in three years, wow, you've made a lot of changes. The only person, I mean, the police chief's still here, but we've got a lot of other new people besides that. And I hope the police chief stays, by the way. I think you're doing a fine job, Mark. And I, and I mean that, but, but, um, that's what we need here is, is a team of people that, now don't roll your eyes at him. The, um, the, is, is that we have a team of people here that, that realize their contributions really matter. And, and, you know, I would say that Jackie too, sitting back there in the back, I wasn't sure when you started, you've done a great job, you know, and, and it's important, no, I, I mean that because I, I just wasn't sure because I didn't know what your experience level was and the place you came from is now asking to, to double the taxes this November for the Haywood County Park District and, and, you know, that's not the way we live up here and you've gone to somewhat of a Spartan organization that wants to try to do so much with the minimum amount. And, and thanks for realizing that's what the tone is that we've hoped to set and, and you're, and you're getting the stuff done. And that's what's important. And, and so the, the contributions of our employees are, are certainly valued. And, and that's another thing as we kind of formulate our strategic mission is that we value our employees' ideas and contributions, so.
That's fantastic, yeah.
We have, um, some type of award program, employees?
Yes, sir.
Awards?
Yep, we have Employee of the Quarter and then we'll have Employee of the Year, um, at the end of the year. And then, um, uh, just coming up here on September 10th, the Colrain Chamber of Commerce is going to be recognizing the Police Officer of the Year and the Firefighter of the Year. Uh, encourage everyone to, to attend that. It's a breakfast. Uh, it's a tradition that's been going on for a decade or so. And encourage any, anybody out there listening to join us too. Tickets are available on the Colrain Chamber website.
When we, when we, the department, uh, given that awards, I think we can do that in the trustee meetings.
Sure. Oh, I'd love, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it'll give me a great, uh, you know, appreciation we can show for the outstanding work.
Yes. And, uh, has, has Employee of the Second Quarter been notified? Great. So maybe at the next meeting, we can, uh, bring Mr. Rob Shepard, our IT Director, he was the employee.
Sure. There's a lot of people who worked behind the scene and just let's, let us bring them up, appreciate their work.
That's great.
And once again, nobody here lost their position due to the COVID shutdowns and it's because we're a financially stable organization.
You, you, you're right, Dan. You know, that, that's one, Jeff McRae, who's going to give a presentation, how, uh, our township is financially sound. And, and that's a good, uh, presentation, I read it.
Very good. This has been spectacular for us. So this, this really does provide a whole lot of momentum for us going into our leadership retreat next week. And, um, we'll, uh, we'll brainstorm ways to actualize what you just described and, and achieve, achieve your goals. That's, that's what we do.
You, you're right, Jeff. What you guys do, employee do, make us look good. It's a simple fact, you know, what you, you do outstanding work, it makes us look good. Any, everywhere I go, like grocery or store something, you know, you guys do a great job, you know? That, that feels good, that, the compliment goes to you guys, your hard work, everything you do.
I just want to follow up on one thing I mentioned with sustainability. Um, and I want to give the, um, you and, and Jeff to the third power, Jeff, 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 credit for this, this effort of going to the self-insurance route. I mean, that's what I mean by sustainability. We're going to save, um, six figures at least per year. And, and that's something that over the course of the next 10, 15 years, that makes a, a lot of difference. Um, and, and when we talk about sustainability, you know, not going back to the taxpayers, figuring it out a different way. And I think that that's, um, you know, that's part of our challenge, I think you've heard from all three of us. And I just want to, um, recognize that, that Mr. Unger said that he may be headstrong.
Gene, I hope you're not, I hope you're watching something else at home besides this.
I, I think that was an admission, so.
Well, I just, I can't help it.
I agree with you.
Blame, blame, blame my German ancestors. I, that's just, you should have seen how I grew up.
No, I agree with you with debt. I think debt is a, what is it, um, was it Thomas Jefferson said the big, or maybe it was Madison? One, one of the founding fathers said the biggest threat to democracy is debt.
Yeah, I just, I just could never stand that. I don't have the nicest, newest stuff, but guess what? I can tell you where it all came from and it's all paid for. And I just had never, you know, when, when the company I worked for, um, and I don't blame the owner one bit, when he shut down when COVID started and all of our customers were closed, I thought, I'm not, I gotta go get something else to do, which I got very lucky and found a great job very quick and in fact, didn't miss a day. And, um, but I, I just could never stand, I've got such an aversion to it that I, I just could never.
And I'm there with you, luckily our federal government is in the same boat.
Yeah, and they're burying us. They're absolutely, they're absolutely burying us. So I think you've heard, what questions do you have for us?
Well, I think that there will be more as, as the process moves on. Uh, but I think that this, like I said, this, this gets us rolling and, um, what we'll do is spend some time unpacking what you just said and organizing it and then coming up with ways to, to effectuate it, so.
Well, great. I have another issue since we're here in open session and it has to do with a clean community. And, um, as I've said so many times, we can't talk to each other outside of meetings, but here we are and the TV cameras rolling and all these little things that I, that I see out there, like, you know, this house with the stuff in the yard and this guy here who hasn't cut his grass in three months and all this kind of stuff. I don't know if you've been called on it or you've been called on it, Rog. This is over in Springfield Township, it's not here. But if you go to where La Rosa's and the Shell Station is on Compton Road, there is a waterway there that runs north and kind of snakes its way north up towards Adams Road and then flows over towards the Winton Road, uh, to the Winton Lake. And there is a car that is over in that creek and it's flipped over and upside down. And the only way to get back there is off of Orangeburg. And I had a resident call me and said, what can you do about this? I called Colrain and they said it's in Springfield Township, which it is, but it is driving me nuts. And it's 800 feet off the pavement. And when I was over there two Fridays ago and met with this, the guy who lives there on the corner, he said, you, you want to walk? And we, we must've walked 800 feet back there. So there's no way to get to it with a wrecker. And that creek's kind of shallow, but when you get a gully washer, I mean, it lifts up. When we got back there, he said, this car is 100 feet downstream of where it was. And I just don't have a clue how to get that out of there.
I've called everyone but the Pope in order to try to solve this problem. I mean, I've called county level, state level.
So you've seen it.
I haven't, I've seen pictures of it, but, but.
Well, go walk back there. I mean, it's, it's, the, the problem is there's like two and three foot elevation changes. You couldn't get back there with a, with a Bobcat or a Backhoe to drag it out. I think the only answer is, is to cut it up. And I think it would make a great, it would make a great training exercise for our fire department, get back there and cut it up and haul it out. But it's not in Colrain Township, but we have the only access to it because there's no way to get to it. There's no land-based path to get to it from Springfield Township. Ultimately, if we could get it to continue downstream towards Adams Road, you could reach over and pick it out of there. But it's a 92 Honda and it's flipped over and.
And the VIN number's gone, so we don't know.
I, I have the VIN number.
Oh.
And Chief has it too. And you ran that VIN and it's not stolen. And that, that sucker is driving me nuts. How are we going to get that out of there? It's in Springfield Township. Is that the answer? Yes, I do.
Yes, it is. And I think that, that's what.
But, but they'll have to come through Colrain to get it because there's no way to get down in there. So, and, and the reason I'm telling you two guys is we never get to talk to each other. So have you seen it, Rog? Go over there and, don't go back there dressed like that, but put on some boots and go back there and see it. I just cannot figure out how to get it out of there. I don't know how it got in there for that matter, but it's 800 feet off the, you ain't going to pull it out with a tow truck. I, I think the answer.
Before, you got all the, the leadership.
Mike.
The leadership here, most of them, I'm sorry. Would you, Jeff, Chief, uh, Chief Walls, Jeff Beckbark, Jeff McRae, you got any question to ask? What's input on this strategic planning? Do you have anything in mind, like to talk to trustees? I, I know we, we want to talk to one on one afterwards, uh, after you guys come back from, uh, retreat. Uh, now, uh, you got any discussions, any, any recommendations you see?
I appreciate the detailed guidance you give. It's not always been that way. I mean, if somebody's been in the township for quite a while, it's generally take care of what you're supposed to take care of. It's nice to have your input, get your vision so we can change our practices and our policies to meet that vision. It's very helpful.
Good, Chief. Jackie, you got any input?
More after our retreat and we'll have to circle back.
I'm sorry.
Sorry?
I'm sorry you trailed off. After, you'll have more after your retreat and.
We'll have to circle back after.
Okay.
Thanks, Jen.
Chief Walls and Jeff Beckbark.
I agree with them. Should we go first?
Mr. Jeff Beck, you got any input on this?
Well, we only have 15 minutes left before the meeting starts, so I'm just kidding.
Well, Rog, as you can see, our administrative staff has no questions. They must all be in agreement that, that you're doing a hundred percent great job.
Good, good.
Will the goats be at the retreat?
Nope. They, uh, they love their job so much, they haven't heard them complain once and they're, they're out there doing a great job.
That, that's.
That's an interesting challenge though, Mr. Waller. In fact, it's making goats.
I don't know. That post has just gotten reposted so many times on, on LinkedIn of all places. It's, it's got the reach of thousands of people right now.
Do goats eat cars?
Yeah.
That's resident did suggest going down there and cutting it up, which you'd still have to carry it out. And like I said, there's no way to even get down there with equipment. There, you know, the rocks are off, it's a really big wide creek and the rocks are offset a couple of feet. So you, there's nothing that has the ground clearance you could drive back there with.
Okay, any further discussions? If not, you want to?
Yep, no, that's, that's everything we could ever ask for and more. So thanks so much for your input and we'll, uh, we'll report back.
So, so before you adjourn, I would encourage both you guys to go back there and figure it out, how are we going to get that out of there?
Sure.
It's bad. And the residents that are complaining are the ones in Colrain. So to them, they don't see a border. They see a car that's back there.
I'm going to put some plants in it and make it a decorative piece.
There's got to be a way to get that out of there.
Okay, um, yeah. Um, if no further discussions, I'll, uh, ask for the adjournment.
I'll move for adjournment.
I'll second.
Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Stronger.
Aye.
Mr. Rajapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
This, uh, work session of Board of Trustees is adjourned and, uh, please, uh, come back seven o'clock for the regular Board of Trustee meeting. Thank you very much. The Board of Trustees of Colrain Township convenes today, July 27th at 7:00 PM. Uh, would you all please rise? Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Rajapal.
Here.
Mr. Waller.
Here.
Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the moment of meditation. Let us, uh, just look around and see all the young police officers, um, the fire, firefighter, EMS people, they are coming forward to protect our community, to serve. Let's, let's, let's pray to keep them, you know, safe and good health. Thank you, be seated please. The next on the agenda is the fiscal office approval of minutes.
Thank you, Board. Um, I have the minutes of the regular Board of Trustees on July 13th, 2021, and I would just ask for approval of those minutes.
I motion that we would approve the July 13th, 2021 minutes.
I'll second that.
Any discussions?
I did review them. Jeff, I trust you got my message?
I did.
Okay. No other comments?
That message was that there were no errors, by the way.
Okay, yeah. There you go.
Mr. Baker, roll conference.
On first look.
Mr. Stronger.
Aye.
Mr. Rajapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
That's all I have.
The next on the agenda is the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Rajapal. Board of Trustees, good evening again. We have five presentations for you this evening. The first one will be presented by our finance director, Mr. Jeff McElravy, and he'll be providing you with a mid-year financial update.
Good evening. It's odd to see you here at the beginning of the meeting.
This is the first time.
Yeah. No pressure.
So, uh, last month, we, or at the beginning of this month, actually, we closed the books on June and therefore the first half of the fiscal year. And we thought that it would be, that it may be helpful for us to come before you and give you a mid-year update in terms of where we stand versus the budget that this board approved back in December. And then also to take a look at a few other indicators that speak to the financial health of the township overall. So, um, one of the recent additions to the administrative reports that are available on OpenGov through the transparency portal are a series of 24 indicators that measure the fiscal health of the township. And we'll go through each of those relatively quickly, I hope, to, to hopefully give you a good sense of where things stand. The headline, before we get into all of these indicators, is that everything looks good. Mid-year, we aren't facing any, any challenges and overall, we are in very good shape. So taking a look at these first three indicators, starting with the one in the middle and then the one to the right, these are measures of where we are in terms of revenue and expenses compared to what was budgeted. And for all funds, we are ahead of budget from a revenue standpoint and we are under budget from an expense standpoint, which is precisely where we want to be as an organization. That prevents us from having to make dramatic changes mid-year that could be very difficult for an operating department to, to, to manage. So as a result of the revenues being in, uh, in excess of expenses and ahead of budget, our cash position for all funds is just over 4.8 million to the good. So, um, so that's the headline. Things, things look good. Drilling down to each of the funds, starting with the general fund, what we have, it's a similar dynamic there. Revenues are ahead of expenses, although not as much for all funds. And similarly, expenses are below budget. Jeff, if you could click on that cash position graphic. So what you will see there is that red bar showing that our expenses are ahead of revenues. And I point that out not because it is cause for concern. It is actually deliberate. If you take a look at the 2021 budget, we were scheduled to spend down fund balance in the general fund by about $441,000. And at the mid-year point, we are at, Jeff, could you move over to the, thank you. Uh, thank you. Just over 61,000 with expenses in, in excess of revenues for this fund. So, so even though it is showing as a red indicator, we are ahead of budget. So that is a good thing. Okay. Jeff, if we could go to the fire fund? So for the fire fund, our revenues are well ahead of budget and this is a result of the new levy and expenses are under budget. And that's contributing to the cash, cash position that you see there in, in the green. Yes. And then for the police funds, and this is the first set of indicators that actually combine several funds that are in our accounting system. So this is the police district fund, the law enforcement trust, and the enforcement and education funds. The revenue is on budget and the expenses are in, are under budget. So we are in good shape in that fund as well. For the roads funds, again, this is a combination of several funds that are in our accounting system. This is the motor vehicle license tax, the road and bridge fund, and the permissive motor vehicle license tax. And again, our revenues are, there's a little bit of a typo there. That's actually revenues to budget. We are ahead of schedule there and our expenses are way below budgeted. But as the road program ramps up over the course of the summer here and into the fall, those expenses will, will come more in line with budget. So that'll, that will normalize over the second half of the year. The next set of indicators that we're going to look at are the fund balance projections. And this comes out of the long-term financial plan that is a part of the, in this case, the 2021 strategic plan and budget. As you can see, for all funds, over time, there has been a deliberate effort to spend down fund balance in order to deal with some deferred maintenance needs and some deferred capital needs. And then also, as we will see here in just, just a bit, that also is reflecting the police levy having run its course and then some. So for general fund fund balance, again, this is a reflection of what you would see with all funds. Again, a deliberate effort to spend down that fund balance. And then with the fire fund, what you actually see is that low point in '21 and then a sort of a, an arc as the most recent levy takes effect and starts to, to run its course. And then the third graph shows the fund balance for the police fund. And this is the one in the long-term financial plan that we really have our eye on. The last levy that was approved by the voters was scheduled to run for five years. We are currently in year seven of that cycle. So Police Department has been able to find outside funds in order to be able to stretch that levy and prudently manage their expenses. But the, the time is coming sooner rather than later, where we're going to have to have a discussion about a new police levy or a change in our level of service. And then finally, with the roads fund, you can see that the, the fund balance is, is in great shape. And this may actually be an opportunity to use some of those resources to further address some of the deferred maintenance needs that we have in terms of the maintenance of township roads. The next chart consolidates all of the TIF funds into a single graphic. Two of our TIFs, the, the one for the Kruger project and the one for the Colrain Town Center are servicing debt. And then the board has adopted two additional TIFs, one around the Duke project and one around the Northridge project at Sovereign. And we expect that the Duke TIF will start generating revenue next year and the Sovereign, if not in 2022, then shortly thereafter. If you could take us down to the next set. Great. Thank you. So the capital spending by department is just a different way of showing some of what we have already discussed. And actually, Jeff, could you click on that arrow and maybe do a pie chart? And just big picture, this gives you a sense of how the investments are being made by department for our capital budget. This was the first year that we actually separated out our capital expenses in a capital budget. And, and this is, this is how it breaks out roughly. Half of it going to public services, a large chunk, about 46%, if I can read that correctly, 48, thank you, going to public safety and then the balance going to the rest of the capital needs of the township. Great. Yes. So that middle indicator shows the, the debt that is currently being serviced by the township, a topic of discussion from our work session just, just a moment ago. The, and Jeff, if you could click on that one also. So this is the last year that the township will have general obligation debt on its books. This is the year to date in terms of where we are in the debt service that we have made versus the debt service that's budgeted. The reason that looks to be out of balance is because the debt service payments that were made in June were interest only payments and the principal and interest payments that will actually retire all of that debt will be made in December. I would be remiss if I didn't point out that there are also, there also is some non-general obligation debt that we have on our books for several projects that were done with financing through the Ohio Public Works Commission. That's a total of $2.3 million in, in debt. And that will be serviced over the next, what would that be, 18 years? And the debt service on that is, it's about $117,000 a year. And there are also some capital leases that we don't categorize as debt, but that we use to acquire equipment, primarily police cruisers, but also some fire equipment, where it, it is termed a capital lease. But what happens is that we get the use of the asset over its useful life. And then at the end of the lease, we take title to it and then we're able to either continue to use it or dispose of it, depending on what makes the most operational and economic sense. And then the last indicator that I'd like to point out has to do with our investments. State law and township policy limits the types of securities in which we can invest. The township is not in the stock market. But yeah, Jeff, if you could, the, and what that means in terms of what we have been able to earn this year on our investments is, is, it's not great. But fortunately, we are tracking on budget. We're conservative with how we budget this. We're not, we don't budget with an aggressive expectation as to what it is that we're going to be able to earn in terms of interest each year. And that way, we don't get ourselves into trouble if it turns out that the market doesn't perform as we anticipate it. So, so we are on track with, with interest. So those are the 24 indicators. And if this is something that you find useful, we certainly would be more than happy to come back to you and continue to, to update you on where things stand with the finances for the township.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. I got a few comments to make. Our township in excellent financial condition, shape. It tells by the, almost you got like a close to about $5 million cash positions. That's something that, that we should be proud of it because you guys spend the money wisely. And we talked about we're getting some investment interest. I think that when I started, we have over about $200 million invested, set apart. Those are very conservative investment. And we are receiving like a hundred and, almost $118,000 on that asset. That tells you how our township is in fantastic shape. Okay? And one thing, when I see that page nine on the, your presentation in the curve, you put the curve on it. About 2016, we got like a over $40 million. Then your forecast, the fund projection, when it comes to 2025, comes to about, about $9,700. It's a big drop. So how are you going to face that in 2025?
Sure. So the long-term financial planning process is a very important one, but the further you go out in that planning horizon, it can be misleading. And the reason that is, is because of the, the way that property tax is, is structured. So when a property tax levy passes, it is set to raise a specific amount of money. And so the, the, so if you're raising a, a flat amount of money over a five-year period and it, it, the way the levies are sized is to have a portion of that, those early years where you're collecting actually more than you need in anticipation that during that levy, during that five-year period, your expenses are going to outpace that constant amount that you've raised. So, and then over the back end of the levy, what you're doing is spending down that fund balance that you've built up over the beginning of the levy. It's kind of, it's called the bowtie effect because you're, you've got flat revenues and then you've got expenses that are just naturally going to increase over time. And when you do that with multiple levies layered on top of each other, then that bowtie effect gets layered on again and again and again. And what you see in the out years is what looks to be a dire picture. But with prudent, careful management and a, um, attention to making sure that we are matching our expenses on an ongoing basis with our revenues on an ongoing basis, then I see no reason why we wouldn't continue to be very healthy from a financial standpoint.
So you mentioned about multiple levies. You talk about 2025. Those are the, some of the levies, time expired, just continuation of the levies?
So, yes. So the, the, the long-term financial plan assumes that the existing levies would remain in place. It doesn't program for new levies. We wouldn't presume that of the board, that there would be an increase in a levy going forward. It does however, account for increases in expenses.
Thank you, Jeff. Any, any further?
I would just comment that when you look at this on the screen, a couple of the figures don't round, round off and it goes into fractional amounts. It doesn't stop with two digits. I think that's what, that's what I was just showing you. And that's just a technical issue. It's got the right amount, but it carries out beyond the two digits for the cents. Because it rounds, it doesn't round. So that's all. When anybody looks at it, that's what that is. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. Mr. McElravy, thank you so much. Our next presentation board will be delivered by Chief Denny. At our last trustee meeting, trustee Waller, you had at the very end, had some questions about the hiring process in the police department. And so this is a response to that. Hopefully it'll answer questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
This is just going to be a very quick overview of the hiring process. And again, at the end, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to get in more detail or if you want to do that offline, I'm happy to do that. We're often asked a lot, and it's not just from trustees, but from our residents, about how we hire the officers that we hire. Why do we go through the processes that we do to make sure we get the right people? And I always tell them, the most important decision I get to make as chief is who we hire and who we promote. That makes the decision on, on how that organization's going to run for not only the near term, but further down the line. We don't take that decision lightly. And we, in the department, we, we hire or have a team approach to our hiring. So we include officers, civilians, staff supervisors, and even members of the community to come in and help us make those decisions sometimes. Good. Our current staffing levels are right now 56 officers. We have two of them in positions that we're currently testing and looking for somebody for. We also have eight full-time support staff. And those support staff will also undergo this hiring process for most of the, there's a couple of steps that are different for civilian employees, but we put just as much time and effort into making sure we're hiring the right people for those civilian positions as well. And why does it take so long? Well, there's, there's a great deal of liability when you're hiring officers. Hiring and retaining poor employees without a detailed thorough hiring process can unfortunately bite you when it's too late. Once you find out after you've put them out on the road that they weren't the right person for that job, sometimes this costs somebody their life. Police work is the kind of job where an error can cost a resident or the officer their life. And unfortunately, that's too late to find that out. We want to know everything possible about this person. Hiring somebody's a gamble, no matter what. Even under the best circumstances, you're guessing. So what we try to do is find out every possible thing about that person, their history, their background, where they worked in the past, their educational level, before we take that chance and place them on the road. My standard is, when I look at, when I hire somebody, would I be comfortable having them in your house in the middle of the night with you not there? Do I trust them enough to take care of your most important business when I'm not there to watch over them or a supervisor's not there to watch them? to watch over them or a supervisor's not there to watch them? I often tell my wife, and it's kind of frightening as a police chief, a 21-year-old kid has more say over the, the future of this township than anybody sitting in this room right now. At 3:00 in the morning, the decision made by one of our police officers can wipe out all the goodwill and all the good things we've done, could take that financial picture that we just saw and wipe that out if we don't make the right choices. So it's, it's very important that we get the right person for these jobs. Okay? Our current process, we've had 107 applicants. We hire about 5% to 8% of our applicants generally, so it takes about 12 to 20 applicants to just fill one spot. So we always place the labor-intensive parts of the process near the end. Most of our applicants fail the oral board and the background process. The oral board's one of the very first parts of the process, and believe it or not, it seems like it'd be a very standard, you know, we ask a couple of questions, they answer them, how bad could you do? It's, it's shocking what you find out about an applicant just during that interview portion, and taking the time to really delve into how they answer the questions. Not really the, the content of the answer necessarily, but how they answer the question. Do they make the eye contact? Do they look down at their feet? Do they even answer the question that you ask? So there's a lot that we do gain from that, that period of time where we have, there's really no way for them to prepare for it. So it's really probably the most telling part of our process.
Chief, how long would that go? That panel interview process?
How long does it take for each applicant?
Each applicant, yeah.
Eh, probably 15 to 20 minute period of time. We have some standard questions that we like to ask, but sometimes that'll deviate into other areas that the, the panel can go into if they need to, but we have standard questions that we go by. This is just a quick overview of our process, the application. Most of our best officers anymore are coming from referrals from other police officers. So that, that does lessen that, that guesswork that we have to do when we hire somebody a little bit. They all take a written examination, the physical fitness test, then there's the panel interview we talked about. Then the most labor-intensive part is that personal history questionnaire and background. So we fill out about a 50 to 60-page document that tells us everything they've ever done in their entire lives, and then the background investigator goes to prove you lied about something in there. We want to find something you either didn't tell us that we, we can find, or something that it's in there that maybe you misled us on a little bit. So it's kind of a personal challenge for our background investigators to make sure everything you put in there is the right information. Part of that is a polygraph examination based on everything that the background investigator finds, a home interview, and then I sit down with them in my office with the lieutenant, and we talk, and we decide whether they're going to be a good fit for our organization. And only after that point do we make a conditional offer of employment. Now, conditional offer means they must get the board's approval. So no one's hired until you, you three say it's okay to do that. But we, we then offer them a medical examination and psychological evaluation before we place them on the road. And they're still not done. If they are not a certified police officer in the state of Ohio, they have to go through a police academy, which is about five months. They then take the state certification exam, and then once we get the board's approval, they're still about three to four months away from being prepared to be on solo patrol. They're, they're placed in an FTO period. They have two separate FTO officers that follow them. They work right alongside them every day. There's daily observation reports conducted and given to the lieutenants, and then they must take a written examination to, to come out of the FTO process. And then after that's done, they still have a year where we can terminate them for any reason. So they're on a probationary status, so we follow them very closely. They're done, evaluations are done every quarter on new employees, and we make a decision at the end of that period of time whether they're going to remain in the process. So from an, an opening in patrol to hiring somebody who's already certified in the state academy is six to seven months. That's a long period of time. But again, that's, there is no more important decision I make than who I put out on the streets to take care of you and your families, so I want to make sure it's done right. It is a labor-intensive. I wish we could snap a finger and just fill these spots, but anytime that's done in any other police department, you have a nightmare somewhere down the line. You, you may save yourself five minutes here, but you're going to have five years of heartache with somebody because you didn't take the time to do the right process. So we're very proud of this. This is part of our accreditation, requires that we have a very detailed process like this. So we, we take it very seriously, and we make sure we get the right people.
Thank you, chief. I'm really proud of our police department. You guys are doing a fantastic job. Hiring a right person is very critical.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you sharing that process, and it's, it's as in-depth as I was led to believe, so thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Chief, while you're up here, we've got two more presentations.
Speaking of hiring and promoting people, Jake McElroy. Right there. Jake was hired in Corin in 2017. Jake served 14 and a half years in the United States Army, ending his military service in 2020 as a sergeant. Jake served in Ramadi, Iraq, and Afghanistan as a squad leader and an EOD disposal specialist. He quickly transitioned those leadership skills and became a leader within our department, and he's been a field training officer and, and served as an officer in charge. Jake's a 2007 graduate of Northwest High School, one of our local kids. Unfortunately, the most qualified people sometimes don't shine in promotional tests. As department leaders, we know who they are, and we want them in leadership roles, but sometimes that's just not meant to be. They have to go through this process, and it's very difficult, and there's competition. Jake's an example of a natural leader. We are lucky to have stepped forward and take on the responsibility of leading our officers. He's also someone who's already been identified by our officers as an unofficial leader long before tonight, when he's going to be sworn in as sergeant, so we're very proud to have him on, and we'll do his oath of office. Would you like to have step up with you? Want to introduce who you brought?
Sure. My mother, father. My sister, and all kinds of other parents.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Ready? I state your name.
I, Jacob Thomas McElroy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio and its bylaws.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio and its bylaws.
I will abide by the Corin Police Department mission and value statement.
I will abide by the Corin Police Department mission and value statement.
Code of ethics.
Code of ethics.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
Policy and procedure.
Policy and procedure.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A police sergeant.
A police sergeant.
In and for Corin Township.
In and for Corin Township.
County.
County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
With that's my ability.
With that's my ability.
That's all we got.
Congratulations, and thank you also for your service overseas. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And congratulations to your parents. That is good parenting.
I tried my best for that.
Yeah.
Nothing is too easy, though.
That's a proud moment for your parents. See your son promoted.
Next presentation will be for our newest officer, Andrew. Will you step forward? Introduce who you brought with you.
Yes, my parents, Sheriff Eric Mersey, my daughter, Mia Mersey, and then Todd and Ava Moss. Todd was my lieutenant at our college, she'll be retired, so.
Andrew's a 2008 graduate of Corin High School, and he's a township resident, which is great. He has a four-year-old daughter, eight-year-old, I'm sorry. Prior to coming to Corin Township, Andrew worked for the North College Hill Police Department for two and a half years, and he's a 2017 graduate of the Butler Tech Police Academy. So we'll go ahead and do your swear.
I, Andrew Mersey.
Do solemnly swear.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio and its bylaws.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio and its bylaws.
I will abide by the Corin Police Department mission and value statement.
I will abide by the Corin Police Department's value and mission statement.
Good.
Code of ethics.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
Policy and procedure.
Policy and procedure.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Police officers.
In and for Corin Township.
In and for Corin Township.
County.
County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
With that's my ability.
With that's my ability.
That's all we got.
Congratulations. How's the, how's the daughter feel? How you feel that your daddy's a police officer?
Mia.
This is proud.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief Denny.
And we'll pause for a moment to let those who are leaving, leave. Very good. Very good. Our final presentation will be delivered by Chief Walls, and he will be introducing and swearing in a newly promoted employee.
Good evening to the board and those in attendance, and those watching virtually tonight. I'm here tonight to introduce and swear in our newest career firefighter/paramedic, Gretchen Gretchen was hired part-time in January 2020 as a firefighter/paramedic. She's a graduate of Corin High School. She has an associate's degree from Cincinnati State. She did her volunteer firefighter and firefighter-one training at Butler Tech, her firefighter-two here in Corin Township. She's also trained in juvenile youth fire setters intervention management and police mountain bike training. She was approved at the board meeting on June 22, 2021 as a career firefighter/paramedic, and she's accompanied tonight by her brother Larry, who worked part-time for Corin Township for a number of years and is employed now as lieutenant with the Cincinnati Fire Department.
I state your name.
I, Gretchen Santiago.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And its bylaws.
And its bylaws.
I will abide by.
I will abide by.
The Corin Township Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Services mission statement.
Corin Township Fire Department. Missions and, sorry.
Mission statement.
Mission statement.
Values.
Values.
Code of ethics.
Code of ethics.
Standard operating guidelines.
Standard operating guidelines.
And the township's policies and procedures.
And the township's policies and procedures.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of firefighter/paramedic.
The duties of firefighter/paramedic.
In and for Corin Township.
In and for Corin Township.
Hamilton County.
Hamilton County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
With the best of my ability.
With the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Got a lot of visitors. Good luck.
Thank you, chief. And Mr. Raj Kopal, that concludes our presentations this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Next on the agenda is citizens' address. Let's go with Mr. Keith Miller, please. Like I said previously, we, we give five minutes, citizens' address. I humbly follow this so that we can conduct the business meetings smoothly.
Good evening. Hello, Keith.
There we go. I'm louder than the mic is, anyway. You know that. But, uh, for last week's talk, I'm still studying on all that, you know? So, uh, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet tonight, and I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions of yous. If you noticed, I mean, down at the Duke Center there, as I drive by there, if that's supposed to be a place that's maintaining power lines when they're down, how come I don't see a fleet of trucks sitting there? I mean, if you're, if you're downing power lines, you're fixing down power lines, shouldn't there be a fleet of trucks? So is that what that building's really about?
I think they're in the back.
It's about what I was told, which is a three-way, three-way gas main coming through there that we weren't told about. That's what, that come out of the lawsuit with Sandy, that there was actually a three-way gas main coming through there. That would explain why there's not a fleet of trucks, because you don't need trucks. It was just a gas main going through there. I mean, you want to see what a company looks like that fixes down a power line? Go out on Simpson Road. There's a private company right there on Simpson, just shy of North Bend. They got a fleet of trucks sitting there because they go out to fix down lines. Duke's property, they don't have fleet of trucks down there. I want you all to go down there and look. And like I said, if you, if you went down and looked at the area, there used to be the hotel that sort of fenced off separately from the rest of the place, because that's sitting there too, you know? And I was also told by, uh, that you guys could give left turn lanes on the new Corin to be, and that Grippo wasn't going to get one. Is that true? You can answer that later. I'm not going to be here for the answer, because you know, what goes on in this room, you ain't going to change anything. We try, we tried doing it nicely. We got Raj elected, we tried to get, do it nicely, you know, me and the neighbors got together, and we did it as nice as we could, and we got rid of the problems, and we got rid of that Ritter character, and Dieters ran away before he got, uh, too far out there, you know? I mean, I'd just love that Dieters never could win an election again, Dennis I'm talking about. Why Joe wins, I don't know. Man. I don't know. I keep looking. I know three lives got lost in Corin Township that Joe Dieters ignored. How many don't we know about? How many cases that Joe Dieters ignored because the rich man took that life that Joe Dieters just ignored? I realize this don't have much to do with this township, but it has something to do with this township and this county, you know? When we can't have what we all call politicians that are real, we got what Trump referred to as rhinos, you know, Republican in name only? I see that all the time. I just want to get this township straightened out, and I want to feel like I'm not getting robbed for the rich man. The rich man's got plenty of money. Why do they need mine? So I mean, well, I'm gonna let it go at that tonight. I thank you, board, and I thank my neighbors for listening.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, sir. The next on the list, I have Mr. Bernie Felton, please. Yes, sir.
Evening.
Good evening, guys. When I was here last meeting, I brought up about the sign over at across 275 there. I guess, I guess tonight, what I'm going to just ask you, what's the plan for that? Is it going to be like that forever? That's a, that's a question. Somebody needs to take a look at it and see if we can't get it fixed. I mean, it's, it's, it makes us look foolish. I mean, let's face it. That's that, that's what I have to say about it, but I brought it up last meeting, and, and I just thought I'd see what happened, but what do you, what do you guys got planned for it? You gotta have a plan if you're going to fix it, or take it down. Maybe this is the simplest thing. Well, also, they had a couch down on East Miami River Road. They said at last meeting, you were going to get it cleaned up. It's not cleaned up yet, and two weeks later. Raj has been on top of it. He did, I talked to him today about it. It still isn't cleaned up. He was going to send down somebody to site them.
Bernie, one second, I want to explain. The county engineer's office went there, called the county, and.
Stop the clock. I don't think it's my time.
So, so I want to just touch, so we, we on top of that now. Go ahead. Go ahead.
My point I was bringing up, we, he had two weeks to clean up a stupid couch, and we're going to send somebody down and site them, is what you said. Why don't you just go down and pick this, we got road crew and a truck, just go down and get it, and take the rumpkin, it's, it's done, except making an issue out of everything. That's why nothing gets done. We gotta go about it and do everything hard. I, I don't, I'm used to getting things done, otherwise I'd been out of business a long time ago. Anyway, that's that, so when do you think you might get it cleaned up? The couch in our valley. Been there for three months.
Sure, yeah. We'll, we'll get down.
Excuse me?
I said, we'll get down there, Bernie. Thank you.
Bernie, if you could get an exact address on it and.
I, go ahead, Bernie. We'll, we'll, we'll talk. Please, please go ahead, rest off your comments, please.
Last meeting, Mr. Mills, you commented that we try to make the school district whole. I guess I questioned that a little bit. I know how the school board operates.[1693.21]
I'm used to getting things done. Otherwise, I'd been out of business a long time ago. Anyway, that's that, so when do you think you might get it cleaned up? The couch in our valley. Been there for three months.
Sure, yeah, we'll get down.
Excuse me?
I said, we'll get down there, Bernie, thank you.
Bernie, if you could get an exact address on it and...
I, go ahead, Bernie, we'll talk, please, please go ahead, rest of your comments, please.
Last meeting, Mr. Mills, you commented that we try to make the school district whole. I guess I questioned that a little bit. I know how the school board operates. I sat down with them as a trustee years ago. They want your left arm, if they can get it, and they'll take your right arm along with it. So, but this stuff of making the school board whole, the school whole, that means, that means nobody gets any money but the school for 20 or 30 years. That's not smart. We never did, used to do it that way at all. That's why Stone Creek was only a 10-year TIF. That's why we ended up when it was over with a million seven, to do with what we pleased. But to make them whole all the time doesn't make sense. Not to me, it doesn't. Mr. Mills, you said something about, well, the TIFs and that are good, and I think you were looking at future development. This development bring that development, is what I understood you were saying. You look at me like I'm stuck to heads.
I don't wanna take your time, Mr. Fiedleday, I'll respond at the end.
I guess my point is...
Bernie, what we'd like to do on the citizens' address, I mentioned the last time too, I'd like the citizens' address completely within a five minutes. Then, when the administrative report comes, we respond, the trustees, administrator, that's the process we created. I'd like to follow that process, please. So, go ahead.
How are you, you're running a meeting?
Go ahead, sir.
I'm just saying that when I come here, I'm not trying to give you a bad time, but when I bring something up two weeks ago and nothing's done, are you kidding me? Anybody can get it done. I could send a lane of down, you got it done. But anyway, Jeff, you said something about the TIF would bring more development. Maybe. You don't know that first fact. You don't have a clue about that at all. You don't know. If it's the right piece, big piece of property, and a lot of places you can develop, but are you gonna give them a TIF too, the new people coming in? That don't make sense. You keep going backwards. You're giving money to everybody but the residents, and that's who pays the taxes, sir. And you say the TIFs are good? Prove it to me, I can prove it's not any good. Stone Creek was a good TIF. The ones you guys are doing with Rumpke. Why would you give them a TIF? Why would you give Kroger a TIF? Why would you give Duke a TIF? They were already here. That's giving our money away. You won't see any real money for 20 or 30 years. Anyway, that's what I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, Bernie. That's all the agenda. I have an email, I can't open up my laptop here, from Rose and Charlie Specter, but you got a copy, Jeff? She's talked about the new store, the Dollar Tree on Golden Avenue and the Galbraith Road, supposed to, they're not cleaning up, and some other addresses she gave. Golden Avenue, some businesses, they're not doing well, you know, they're not cleaning up. I just wanted to address in the meeting, we'll follow through those, the business, make sure they're responsible for cleaning up the trashes front of the building, around the building. That's the email I got from Rose and Charlie Specter, okay? The next on the agenda, any more, if no more citizens' addresses, let's move on to the administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Raj Koppel, just to answer some of the questions that came up during citizens' address, there is a fleet of trucks down at Duke. They are line trucks, and they are dispatched to address issues with our electrical grid. Grippo's not getting a left turn lane, they have a left turn lane, and that is not now or ever has it ever been proposed to take that left turn lane away, so they will continue to have a left turn lane. We don't wanna interfere with the movement of that delicious product. I mean, I love Grippo's potato chips, and I don't want to see it slow down, so. Mr. Fiedleday asked about the Interstate 275 sign and what the plan is. The administration has made several recommendations, and we just need to figure out what the vision is for that moving forward, and have two of you say this is what we wanna do, and then we will get it done. The couch on East Miami River Road, we'll get after it. Thank you, Mr. Fiedleday, for letting us know about that. And I think there may be sort of a fundamental misunderstanding about what a TIF is, because the way that Mr. Fiedleday described it was not how a TIF is. The TIF is not a tax break. The property owner continues to pay the exact same amount of tax with a TIF or without a TIF. The difference is, with a TIF, the township gets more revenue. The township gets more revenue. It doesn't mean that the school district gets all of it, it doesn't mean, and maybe perhaps when we have our public hearing on the establishment of seven new TIF districts, which is coming at the end of next month, perhaps we can have another presentation on how TIFs work and that sort of thing, just to clear up any misunderstandings. But that should, those are the answers to those questions. As for the administrative report, I wanted to share with you all today, per your directive that litter pickup is very important, and because we're having such a hard time finding part-time people, I executed a contract not to exceed $10,000 with Merkel to pick up trash on Corrine Avenue once every three weeks until further notice. So I understand that, you know, you wanna get this accomplished, and we're gonna make that happen.
Do you know a date, that date, when they're gonna begin?
It could be as early as next week.
Okay.
And then, the contract is for once every three weeks. So, that's good. I've asked them to record the amount of trash that is picked up, so that we can, that's one of our key performance indicators in our strategic plan, is amount of trash. So, that is coming. I wanted to share with you, and maybe residents have heard about this, I'm sure that you're all aware, the state of Ohio has been engaged in litigation with opiate distributors, and there is a very large settlement on the table. The state of Ohio could get more than $800 million. If we join into that settlement with the state of Ohio, the state is gonna split 30% of that $800 million, or about $240 million, $240 million, out among local counties, cities, and villages, and townships. So, it appears to be in our best interest to join in with that settlement, but I look forward to hearing what you all think. We talked a little bit during the work session about vacancies, and I wanted to share with you some good news about vacancies that are going away soon. One, very prominent vacancy at the intersection of Dry Ridge Road and Corrine Avenue, that's the Steak 'n Shake. Steak 'n Shake closed down during the pandemic, maybe even before, because they were going through a restructuring where they were going from corporate stores to franchise stores. They have completed that and found a franchisee in Cincinnati, and that is gonna be reopening as a Steak 'n Shake. So, that vacancy will go away. And for those of you who remember where Olive Garden used to be, which most recently was a Chinese restaurant near the old Kroger, that building is very likely going to be the home of our very first Culver's restaurant. So Culver's will be coming to Corrine Township, and will eliminate that vacancy. So, really excited about that. Also, not to steal any thunder from Ms. O'Connell, but our road program is in full swing right now, and lots of residents are experiencing a little bit of frustration because it is inconvenient to have big, heavy machines on your road for a couple of days, not being able to park on the road, but we appreciate your patience, and we hope that you're happy with the outcome. There are lots of roads being resurfaced throughout the township, and that is a good thing for all of us. That will conclude my administrative report. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Mills, let's talk signs for a second. So, I spoke to you last week about I-275 sign. And kind of the sense I got is that we have a couple different options going forward. Initially, I had been the one that took it out of the budget for this year, with the idea that I wanted to, I wanted to see something done with the exit stuff first, with beautification and trash and litter and stuff like that, but it's come up a number of times. I don't have a problem with moving it up or back in the calendar, if that's something that we feel that we can, that we can do now, or within the next couple of months, or whatever. I know there's a couple different options, but now that we are getting, you know, some services with the state of Ohio cutting that stuff down, and I know that the township now is cutting, it's starting to look better, I just didn't wanna, to me, it was kind of a directional issue. I didn't wanna put the sign up on something that wasn't being maintained to my liking to begin with, and I kinda wanted it as kind of a, almost like a reward for those that are gonna, in September, or whenever, are gonna start to do the plantings there at the exit. But that's the reason that that initially made it in this budget and then didn't, but I'm not, I'm not completely wed to that. If my colleagues wanna move it forward for some reason, that's fine too. It has to be done. I don't think anybody's denied that. Somebody, I think Keith brought it up, I can't remember, it may have been the previous meeting, the idea that more and more of these areas are really taking some pride and ownership into those interchanges, and it's, you know, you can't do it the way you used to do it. I mean, it's almost like it's competition now, to see who could have the nicest exit, and I don't wanna be on the bottom of that table.
I'll comment on it as well. As you know, I contacted you two weeks ago. One of the complicated things about that is this closing down I-275, so you can, we're talking about the Corrine letters on the Corrine Avenue Bridge that goes over I-275 and how they're faded out. If you go up to Monroe on I-75, they have the exact same sign, of course, it says Monroe. The problem is, the finish prematurely wore off of those letters, so some of them are nice and have their original black finish, the black satin finish, and the other ones are completely washed out, and it does look bad. Two years ago, we talked about what it would cost to shut it down, take the letters down, take them and have, just have a new paint finish put on them, and then put them back up. I forget where we were on it, was it somewhere between $60,000 and $80,000 to have it closed down and have it done some other way, or?
I wanna say, at the time, it was around $40,000, but remember, there's two issues here. So, one is the paint is fading on the letters, the existing letters. The other problem is, there isn't enough contrast between the letters that exist there right now, even if they were painted black, and the chain link fence. And so, if we just wanna solve the problem of paint, then we believe that, well, two years ago, three years ago, it would be about $40,000, it's probably $50,000 now. If we wanna resolve the entire issue, that would involve putting some type of shadowing effect in the back, so fabricating some kind of background so that that letter stands out, and you can actually see Corrine. And so, when two of you tell me which direction you wanna go in, I will go in that direction.
So, is it possible, it sounds like, is it a case where it's gonna cost more repair than to get new?
We haven't gotten quotes for, we'd probably have to refresh all of our quotes because they're years out of date. So, if you would like me to bring you two quotes, one for the background and fixing that, the whole issue, or, and then I can bring you just a paint quote, and then we can take that decision again. Now, as you pointed out, that's not in the budget this year, but...
We talked about this earlier, special meeting during the work sessions, the part of this, the branding with Corrine, all that. I think, keep that under mind, the branding of Corrine, the new thing, how...
See, that's the issue.
Put them on one theme, and that bridge is also belongs to the ODOT, and we gotta get a collaborative initiative. How much ODOT could contribute? Make it like a nicer than just to put a temporary painting, anything like that. I would strongly come up with some nice design, architect design, make like a really attractive things. Instead of rushing to spend money, then, you know, I think the ODOT should be involved. Tommy Arnold, the director of planning is a very good, very good working with the Corrine Township. I accomplished a lot of things through him. Actually, I'm planning to go, you know, next week or so, meet them. That's one of my topics, to talk to them. Like I said, I know we need that. Every bridges I see around there, they're really, for example, Green Township, signs like that, let's, nice design. I think, did we hire a KZF on that, on the beautification on that 275?
The landscape design, we have a landscape design.
Not the bridge.
Not the bridge.
Yeah.
So, just to be clear, so what I'm hearing, I know what Dan's preferred method, it sounds like, is take the things down, get them powder coated, put them back up. I hear, what I hear you saying, Mr. Raj Koppel, is you would like to have it fit into what becomes our new brand, and so, hold off for the time being, and Mr. Waller, you're saying get two quotes, so...
Well, and that's the issue with the branding, is that, so the Corrine over the, on Corrine Avenue, the overpass over the, that goes to the mall, that's in yellow. I mean, and some others are in red, and that's in black, and I think that, when I talk about rebranding, I want some consistency among all that, and I think, yeah.
So, I hear two of you saying, hold on, let's wait for this until we get the rebranding done, and then move forward with a unified...
Yeah, yeah, that's my goal, do a nicer job, you know, instead of just spend 40 grants here, then we gotta spend the money again. I completely for that, painting the bridge, it needs to be done. It should be nice, when you look at it, oh my God, it looks really good. Maybe we can put some theme, our Corrine High School theme, maybe Cardinals, home of the Cardinals, something like that can attract the visitors.
Or the Knights.
Home of the Knights, something that Corrine will be represented with our background of what we are. Absolutely.
Great, I'm glad we're at this point. As you know, I called you two weeks ago and said, hey, I noticed that ODOT's closing down I-275 on July 22nd. Of course, we haven't had a meeting since the 13th, and that wasn't advertised till after that, and I thought, because that's half the cost, is the traffic control and shutting down 275 to get the letters down. And just to be clear, at some point, that design was approved by ODOT, because even though we're paying for it, they're not gonna let us do something that they won't approve. And so, there was engineering involved in it. Well, the engineering's already paid for, the design is already paid for. Cutting out those letters, laser cutting out those letters, I imagine is a very expensive part of it if we were to replace them. So, I would, fine, I don't know that any of us are allowed to pick out colors for anything at home, I don't know why we would be allowed to do that here, but, it's true, Matt. It's not allowed to pick out any colors at all. No, but anyway, I see no, where I stand on it is take them down and get them powder coated. There's a guy over in Woodlawn, there's several people that do really good work with that, and put them back up. And when we start to go another direction, which is fine, you're gonna have a lot of engineering costs and getting ODOT approvals and stuff, they've already approved what's there. I would say, let's repair or repaint what's there, and put a little shadowing behind it, fine if that's your artistic flair. You know, a background behind those letters so they're seen better. I think you told me at the time, it was so-called valued engineered, and it originally was different, and previous trustees had changed the design back then, and that's why we sit here the way it is today.
They were working towards a budget, and...
Right, and I'm still hung up on the cost of it, but it does need to be fixed, and I think an economical route to consider is take them down, get them powder coated, so the contrast is on the letters. If you wanna fabricate something and put them behind it, that's fine. The fence is already there, the holes are already drilled, take them down and just repair it as a regular maintenance item, so...
But you can appreciate my dilemma, because there is...
Sure, sure. I'll take quick, I know you're raised, man, take a quick, we got a big agenda going. I'll take a quick remarks, please. You wanna say something real quick? I'll take.
I can get ahold of Jim Acton. His neighbor, who's right over here, is very knowledgeable. The letters are just too small.
Go to the mic, go to the mic, Bernie, would you? Dana wants to hear you, so go to the mic. Make sure it's on.
Brief, please, we got a bigger agenda, quick comments, please.
I'm trying to, Raj.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Anyway, Jim Acton, his neighbor, he was in the business, he, I talked to him, he knows what he's doing. You can't use the letters you have, they're junk. You can't use those letters. They're too small to start with, and you don't have flips on them at the end. You block letter, if you know anything about signage, it's gotta be blocked, you can see it off. You start playing around with it, you won't see it, it won't, that's what's wrong with these that we had here, and they were too small. But anyway, Mr. Acton, his neighbor, we can get ahold of him, but his neighbor was very knowledgeable, he'd be a good guy to talk to for you guys, because you know nothing about signs. I say that because I put a bunch of signs up for our work and stuff. Anyway, have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for a nice comment.
Any other questions for me for my administrative report before we move on to the next administrative report?
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Very good. Were there any department directors that have administrative reports? Ms. O'Connell, from our Department of Public Services.
Good evening, gentlemen. I just have a few things to report out on tonight, since I haven't been up here in a while. The, we have goats, as you said, and we are having a meet the goat night at Corrine Park on Friday night, so Friday, July 30th, at 7:30 at the amphitheater before the movie at the park. The cool thing about the goat program, you've probably read about it online, but it's a sustainable way to rid ourselves of invasive species without using chemicals, without using a lot of manpower and time consuming, consuming a lot of time to... do it. Um, we had to work quite a bit to find a vendor to do this, and the vendor we found, he is originally from Colrain Township, so that's really a cool connection. And this is a great partnership with us, because this is also their first foray into public lands as well. So they do stuff on private property, this is their first foray into the public realm. So we're all learning as we go with this, but we've got sixteen goats in the park right now, so we're very excited about that. The, uh, traffic calming devices, they were ordered, however, we're still working on an August twelfth to twenty-sixth delivery date. Um, we won't know anymore for probably two more weeks to get a better idea, because that's, uh, that's coming from the manufacturer right now, and that's going to be direct ship to us. So it'll get here as soon as it can, but as you well know, with manufacturing and shipping right now, a lot of things are in flux. The, I want to give a couple shout outs. Um, one is to the Historical Society, Margie Moore, Bruce Moore, and Chris Henson at their last cleanup day, which is the third Saturdays in, of the month through October. So hey, if you want to volunteer, it's a great way to get out. They were able to use a, um, a biological product, a completely safe product, to clean the tombstones and take the, take the headstones that were gritty and gross and moldy and turn them pristine white, almost pristine white again. It's, it's rather amazing product, and it's chemical free, it's all, um, it's all natural. Uh, and the CCA continues to do a great job picking up on Saturdays. So if any groups, any people, any, you know, teams want to help out, get ahold of the CCA and help keep our, keep our township clean. And, uh, as you know, the Colrain Park Playground is close to opening. We are still working on final things with the punch list. We haven't got our safety release yet, so although a lot of people think it's finished, it still is not finished, but our grand opening is August tenth. So wear your best, uh, sliding pants and prepare to test out the playground on August tenth. Gentlemen, have questions for me?
Thank you. We're all very excited about the park opening. I got a lot of people asking me, calling me about that. I think that's a remarkable playground for the Colrain Township.
Yeah, we're very excited about it, to finally have it come. It's.
Yes.
It was a long wait, then it was a sprint, and now it feels like it's a long wait, but there's just lots of little things to be worked on.
Great job. Thanks, Jackie.
And then you got my message about the two signs?
Yes, the second is the second picture.
Red fern is missing?
Yeah, the second picture, where was the, where were the trucks parked?
The, the second picture is of the sign at the corner of Red Fern and Season, and the sign's not there.
Uh, no, the second picture was trucks parked on the right of way.
Oh, I, the picture should have been, um.
That was the third picture.
The stop sign that's all washed out on, uh.
I got that one.
Okay, yeah, there's only, there's only meant to be two.
Okay, I will ignore the other one then.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Were there any other administrative reports? Nope, that concludes our administrative reports.
Okay, the next on the agenda, thank you, Jeff, um, city's, um, trustees report?
Uh, I'll go ahead and go. So yes, the, um, the vendor that we're using to put a new surface on, on several of the streets, as we discussed when we approved that contract a month or two ago, it's critical to hit the right weather window, and in fact, they're taking advantage of every sunny day. They were out all day Saturday, um, working on several streets, Denler and, and Voyager, and the newer part of Filmerle, and other streets. And I went out and we have an inspector, Colrain Township's represented on those jobs by our inspector who's watching what's going on, and it's a different process, but it, it does go pretty quick, and there is some inconvenience to the folks that live there, but ask them today, and they'll all go, wow, our street got resurfaced over the weekend. And I think they're still out today, and, you know, the best time to get that type of work done is, is when you have, uh, warm weather, and, and that's what we have these last couple weeks. So, um, that's going on, and it was interesting to, to watch. Um, I have gone over and, and driven Niagara, and, um, and I very consciously hold my speed at twenty-five, and when I went through there, actually, earlier this afternoon, oh, there was a guy right on my bumper the whole way. So it's, people just want to go faster over there than, than what is allowed. Um, I did go to the Colrain Historical Society meeting last week, and I would encourage anybody to join the organization or show up at one of their meetings and see if it's something that interests you. The, the, uh, presentation was on the history of Northbrook, and there's some really neat pictures from the early nineteen fifties of, of Pippin Road and where it meets Adams, and, and when the Mullenhard Farm was sold in nineteen fifty-four to, to build some houses and, and meet the, uh, growing demand of a, of a, uh, the post-World War II generation that wanted to move out and away from the city and, and move out this direction, and, um, and it was a really neat presentation. I've also been driving around a lot as usual, and, and I see, um, a lot of work that we're getting done with, with our cleanup process, and I see places that, that still need a little bit of help. And, um, otherwise, things are well, and I'm excited to be at the ribbon cutting in two weeks for the new, uh, playground at Colrain Park. And that would be my report.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, sure. Um, uh, thanks to Mr. McElravy for the, the budget update. Um, I find it extremely helpful, and, um, love the news that, that you're bringing. Um, and thank you, uh, to Chief Denny for the, the hiring process update. Um, just, just a reminder that, uh, we are continuing to, to try to, uh, do code enforcement at an, at an upgraded level and, uh, um, take care of these, uh, trash things as, as they occur. Uh, but you know, the bottom line is that, uh, you know, we really shouldn't need government to force people to not litter. You're, you're acting against your own best interest, if you think about it. I mean, it's that kind of stuff that, that hurts a decline of a community, hurts property values and things like that, but, uh, we're still going to make it a, 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 uh, an important, uh, goal for our community, because I, I think that, uh, you know, I, I believe in that broken windows syndrome, where if you start to take care of the small stuff, the big stuff will, uh, not be such an issue. Um, and we are committed to the 275, um, uh, interchange there and making it look better, and I think it's, uh, I, I think it's, it's getting there. It's, looks a lot better this week than it did last week, and, and I'm happy, happy for that. And I, I think it is, you know, Raj explained it as the gateway to the community, and it's important that we, that we do that. And, um, I think that actually concludes my report. Wow.
Thank you, Matt. Um, I, I got invited to go to the, um, One Ohio, sponsored by the, uh, Ohio State Governor, um, and also Attorney General's Office on the settlement, proposed settlement with the three major pharmaceutical company, like Jeff mentioned, and we also part of the litigation. And, and we are also, they go by the, the population of the township, and, uh, Colrain being the second largest, uh, township in Ohio, we will have a considerable amount of money. Um, but this is, uh, the thirty percent of the directly go to the subdivisions. Um, that would be huge, huge money that we'll, we'll receive. The money that we'll receive from the settlement should be used for the opiate treatment and, and education program. And it happens very coincident, I want to emphasize this, that two years ago, I, I mentioned about, we have some opiate program in, in the opiate treatment program in the Colrain Township. You got to know, Colrain always been a pioneer in this type of program. Our township, thanks to our finest police department and a fire department, they start the QRT program. That became a nationally acclaimed, known that Colrain Township is, is, is really actively involved in that opiate and, and, uh, treatment. We start the Narcan program, they helping people with the opiate addiction. Now, it happened so coincident that the children's hospital, before even the settlement happened, I was talking to the, uh, one of the, uh, the chairman of the department, that, uh, the prenatal, uh, program and the children's, Kathy Stile, and we need to start some program for the mothers here with the opiate addiction and ready to have the baby. And Colrain, the children's have found out, they had some grant, the money, and they want to, they interested in starting the program in Colrain Township. That's amazing. How that this, our township has been known for the innovators of this, this type of program. So they're representing that, uh, a doctor and a professor from the children's hospital, they plan to meet, come to Colrain Township on August twelfth, one thirty, I think, uh, might have mentioned the date to Jeff, to give the program. This is no cost from the taxpayer, this is all the grant money. It is so exciting that we're going to receive that, that settlement money, which is part of the litigations, and now you got apart from that, the, the grant from the children's hospital, helping the mothers and the children in, in our township. They want to try that program in our township. It's all because of our finest, you know, people that work here, they care about our residents, uh, especially those who are addicted to the opiate. So this is a really great thing's going to happen to our Colrain Township, and, and we, we will become one of the model in the nation that, that the program they want to start. That's more interesting. So I just want to, um, announce this, um, uh, in my, my report. I continue to meet with the ODOT about this, uh, uh, Colrain, the bridge program, and also keep that 275, uh, the, along the corridor, the, the middle, uh, all the grass tall cut, or all the, what do you call, weeds cut, and they, I bet they're having the same problem with getting employees, contractors come on work. But so far, ODOT has been a good friend for us. That's, I'll just put my report, uh.
Raj, what's the name of the program, your, your children's hospital you're talking about?
They come on, uh, it's in my email, I can't even open that, uh, here. It's, uh, the doctor and the professor and the.
We, we're not talking about cradle, are we?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It's entirely different program. Uh, they had the grant, I'll, I'll, I'll notify you that, we'll, we'll, we'll talk, uh, when we meet, uh, this team is coming to Colrain.
August twelfth at one thirty.
August twelfth, okay?
Right.
So it's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, and then I'll, I'll let you know, the, the program name. Okay, um, that's the trustees' reports. Um, that's my agenda thing. What's, what, what paper?
New business.
So many papers here. What's next on the agenda?
Uh, new business.
Oh, new business.
Yes, sir. We have several items of new business.
Oh, I found it.
The first is coming from our public safety departments, and will be presented by Chief Denny.
Look, in board have two items. First is recommendation, recommendation of adoption of a motion, uh, to issue a noise permit to Saint John's of the Baptist, fifty-four eighty Dry Ridge Road on August the sixth, two thousand twenty-one, from five PM to ten PM.
I would motion that we issue a noise, uh, resolution permit to Saint John's for their parish picnic on August sixth from five to ten PM.
I'll second it.
Any discussions?
No.
Mr. Baker will call, please.
Mr. Hunger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Gopal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Second item is recommend adoption of a resolution providing for the removal of uncontrolled vegetation refused debris at the listed addresses. They are twenty-seven ten Haverhill, twenty-five twenty-two Impala, and thirty-two twenty-seven Niagara.
I would motion that we de, for the resolution declaring nuisance and ordering abatement at the addresses, um, listed by Chief Denny.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussions?
No.
Thank you, Chief. Make a very aggressive, uh, enforcement.
Great work.
Great work. Okay.
Mr. Baker?
Um, Mr. Baker will call, please.
Mr. Hunger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Gopal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, the next on the agenda is Public Services?
Yes, sir, there's no new business in Public Services this evening. But, uh, in development, we have two items. Uh, the first is a motion to initiate a text amendment to regulate mobile food service uses. Uh, you'll recall at the last trustee meeting, uh, there was a, a discussion about regulating food trucks. Uh, this is something that has been on our, our radar for, for quite a long time. We've never, though, been able to get this across the finish line, and so we intend to do that now. Uh, last Friday, I believe, uh, our, maybe it was two Fridays ago, our, um, team got together to propose a series of, of rules to govern food trucks. And the, uh, the process here is the Board of Trustees would initiate a text amendment. That text amendment, uh, is, is included in the agenda packet. It would be sent to the zoning commission for their review. The zoning commission would, would, uh, review it, debate it, and make a recommendation back to the trustees as to whether or not to, uh, pass the, uh, uh, text amendment. And then you all would take legislative action to amend the zoning resolution. So this step that, uh, happens tonight is, uh, initiates the process of, of changing our zoning resolution to properly regulate food trucks. Recommendation is to approve the motion.
I would motion that we initiate a text amendment to regulate mobile food service.
I seconded. Any discussions?
Yes, I did have a, I was contacted by a citizen that is in the food service industry, and, um, kind of for those just tuning into the conversation, Mark Kirkwood was here a few weeks ago, concerned about a food truck that has planted itself down at the corner of Sheldon and Colrain, and, um, and that grass strip that's there, and, and there's no parking spaces around there, and his concern is that the customers of the food, and he's in favor of food trucks, but not when they're using his parking lot and, and potentially interfering with, uh, Kirkwood customers' access to his parking lot. And that's kind of what brought this conversation forward, and, and, uh, the comments that I got, which is for the zoning board, is what is that guy doing with his wastewater as he cleans, you know, his truck, because there's no plumbing there? And it, apparently Duke has run service off of a pole, so he's, he's tied into the electric. So I don't know that he could move the truck without untying from the electric, or if there's a, a two-twenty plug in there, or how he's operating. I haven't looked that close to it, but I, I do think this needs to be addressed, and, and, uh, so to answer, uh, Jim's questions, the citizen who contacted me, uh, that'll certainly be something that is considered, I hope. And, and, um, so I think this is important.
This something is a new topic that is going to happen, and, and we are, we are now facing that. I think it's a great idea, create a, uh, some type of standard of rules and regulation. Um, and also, we got to be very careful that surrounding, uh, the food business won't be affected, and they've been the business for a long time. Um, so it's, it's a new thing, and we are, we should be prepared for that.
And I'm all for food trucks, don't, don't get me wrong, but how fair is that to, to China chef and Arby's who have, you know.
Sure.
Standing buildings that they're paying property taxes on and everything else, and it's one thing to have somebody come in for a few days, it's another thing for a person to set up a semi-permanent operation there. So I, I look forward to following this process through.
Any more discussions?
No comments.
Um, Mr. Baker will call, please.
Mr. Raj Gopal? Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'll go ahead, yes, you call me already.
You can call somebody else first if you want. I'll, I'll say aye, Mr. Hunger says aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. We are, uh, pleased to be responsive to your, your, uh, requests. Uh, the next item in development is a motion to appoint Ms. Dion Owens to the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Tom Reiniger. Uh, we, uh, as, as we have, we've honored Mr. Reiniger for his many years of service to the township, but that does create a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. His term, uh, was set to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, so the township with, uh, his vacancy advertised, uh, and received two applications. Uh, Ms. Owens would fill the unexpired term of Mr. Reiniger. The, uh, recommendation is to adopt the motion.
I would motion that we appoint, uh, Dion Owens to the Board of Zoning Appeals to fulfill the unexpired term of Tom Reiniger.
I'll second it.
Any discussions?
Uh, it was publicly noticed, and we had two applicants.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jeff, how do, what type of advertisement you did, public?
Uh, we posted it on our, on our website, and, um, I believe there was Circle and Facebook, I believe.
Facebook, not the. Facebook, not the Northwest Press, anything like that?
No.
Okay. So who interviewed this people?
Ms. Owens and, let's see, in fact, if I could be very blunt, there was only one person who was qualified. One person is currently suing the township, and that doesn't seem, it seems very adversarial to sort of put somebody on the board that is actively litigating against us. Didn't seem like that would be in the best interest of the township. Also, Ms. Owens has committed herself to a life of public service and service to the community, and that was not matched on the other resume.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussions?
Not for me.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, board. The next item will be delivered by Mr. McElravy. It is a resolution to authorize the transfer of funds.
Good evening again. The resolution that is before you is one of the last steps that we need to take in order to implement the new self-insurance program for the township. What this will do is authorize the transfer of funds from the general fund, the fire district fund, the parks fund, the police fund, the road and bridge fund, and the zoning fund, in order to cede the new self-insurance fund, so that we are able to pay claims once we make the transition to self-insurance here in August. So the staff recommendation is adoption of the resolution.
I would motion that we adopt the resolution to authorize the transfer of funds as described.
I'll second.
Any discussions?
Not for me.
None? If none, Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, board.
The, thank you, Mike, great job. I'm sorry, it's not Mike, it's Jeff. What am I thinking? Sorry.
I know, there's only four Jeffs in this room right now. You got a pretty good chance of saying, getting the right guy if you say Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, the next on the agenda is all business.
Very good. Mr. Raj Kapal, there's no all business this evening.
Okay, the next on the items, the consent items.
Yes, sir, thank you. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening, all new hires. Two of the items come from Fire and EMS, and one in the Development Department. So first, we recommend the hiring of the following part-time firefighters, EMTs, and firefighter paramedics in the Department of Fire and EMS. Aaron Bryant as a firefighter EMT, Caleb Clemmons as a firefighter EMT, Eric Godby, Justin Kal Schmidt, Matt Kleinschmidt, Nick Clemms, Peyton Ogul, Sam Stagerwalt, and Jacob Tool, all as part-time firefighter EMTs at a pay rate of $14.94 per hour. And we also recommend conditionally hiring the following candidates as part-time firefighter paramedics, Sean Brittenstein and Donald Murdock. The rate of pay for a firefighter paramedic is $16.41 per hour. Recommendation is to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. The next item on the consent agenda is a career firefighter paramedic. The position of firefighter paramedic was posted, applications were received, and interviews were conducted. A conditional offer of employment was extended to the following individual, Andrew Farrell. The wage for this job is $48,926 per year, per the IAFF local 3915 bargaining agreement. Contingent upon your approval this evening, he would be eligible to begin work August 22nd, 2021. And the final item on the consent agenda is a new hire in the Development Department. This is for the position of zoning administrator. This position was also posted, and we received applications and conducted interviews. We'd like to make, we made a conditional offer of employment to Jared Allegh. The wage for this job is $31.25 per hour for 40 hours per week. Contingent upon your approval, he'd be eligible to begin work August 9th, but likely would not start until the 16th. Recommend approval of all the consent agenda items.
I'll motion to approve all the consent agenda items as provided.
I second, go ahead.
Raj will second it. When would the zoning administrator start?
I believe August 16th, it's a Monday, that would be the first day.
Okay, yeah, on here it says proposed start date August 18th, but that would be the beginning of a week, would be the 16th. I don't have a calendar in front of me. Okay. Great, no other questions?
If no further discussions or questions, Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, board, we've accomplished a lot tonight.
Good. The next on the agenda is fiscal office report.
Thank you, board. The only thing I have tonight are a stack of purchase orders that need to be signed, as well as the noise permit. I have that with me, so I'll be giving that to you for signature. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Jared. I don't think so we need any executive session, okay? Now we've got a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion to adjourn, it's 8:28 p.m.
Any discussions? Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you. The Board of Colrain Township Trustees, meeting on July 27th is adjourned. Good night, thanks for watching, thanks for attending the meeting.